Good afternoon, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Tuesday, March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four City Council Work Session for the Community of the Year. Our first item on the agenda this evening is a presentation from Uptown Marion. Welcome.
Thank you, Council. I'm Brooke Proudey. I'm the Main Street Director for Uptown Marion. And today I have Ben Davis with me. Come on up. He is the owner of the Chocolate Shop, but also our current Board President. So he's gonna help me out today with our presentation. Maybe?
All right, thank you.
Oh, there we go. Got it. All right. So Uptown Marion, we are a nationally accredited Main Street District, both with the state and at the national level. And our goal is to drive continued revitalization, growth, and preservation of historic character through appropriate design, promotion, and economic strategies to improve our community. We were established in two thousand and thirteen, so that means last year was our tenth anniversary, and we were doing so many things, we kind of missed it. So we're gonna hope to celebrate sometime this year. We have twenty-plus square blocks, about one hundred and sixty-five buildings, one hundred and twenty-five businesses, give or take a few, and about two hundred and eighty-one residents. This is a map of what our district looks like. It juts out to the north to include the Granger House as a historic asset to our district. So as I mentioned, we are part of a larger network of Main Street organizations. It's a, it's a very grassroots approach nationally that started a while ago. And we're part of over a thousand Main Streets within the nation, and there are three in Lynn County and about fifty in Iowa. Our neighbor Monticello is actually one of the newer Main Street districts, so it was fun to work with them and help them get their programs started. So over the last ten years, what have we been doing? We've seen over forty-eight million in economic development. About half of that was in two thousand and twenty-two alone, with the Broad and Main, the Library Project, and the Streetscape Project all coming onboard at that time. We have about three point eight million in state grants. We've seen three hundred and fifty thousand in the Art Place America Grant for the Uptown Artway, one hundred and sixty-seven business starts and expansions, and over twelve thousand volunteer hours. As I said, this is very much a grassroots program, and it takes a lot of volunteers to make things happen in the district. Any questions so far?
Questions?
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Ben. Yes.
All right, so I get the fun pleasure of talking about the accomplishments and a little bit looking forward. I'm not gonna go through the entire list. I believe you all have a handout with the, the two thousand and twenty-three accomplishments, but I just wanna bring attention to a couple of the highlights where we did get recognized for what we're doing as part of the Main Street District. So Jake, with the, the city engineer, he got an award for leadership as part of the Streetscape Project. Also with the Streetscape Project, we were recognized at the Main Street level for best place-making for our Streetscape Project. We did receive an award for best housing as part of the Broad and Main Project. And then my family, we received a challenge grant for the Keenan Building, which is just kind of on the other side of the Seventh Avenue here. So we continue to push forward and continue to really strive and reach to both have high level of accomplishments, but then also recognize the, the efforts that people are putting into the community when we have a chance. Looking forward at two thousand and twenty-four, we have a, a new standard for our national and state-level accreditation. We're really gonna start working on our transformational strategies, which is what we as a Main Street programmer are gonna get evaluated against going forward. So we do have our two thousand and twenty-four priorities that are very similar to our two thousand and twenty-three priorities, with the top three focusing on parking, community engagement, and then vitality and maintenance. As we're looking forward to the transformational strategy, the, the new way forward for Main Street, we will be looking more at a three-to-five-year strategic goal. So really looking at a kind of a continuation instead of a snapshot of year by year, really looking forward in a longer picture. So as we learn more and educate ourselves about the transformational strategy, we will be looking for, for input and feedback as well of how we might better align ourselves with the community as a whole. And then lastly, this is our current leadership for the Uptown Advisor Board for the Main Street District. I do wanna just give a special note to Nicole and Will, who are representatives from council and from city staff on our board. And then additionally, we just did at our last meeting, talk a little bit about safety in the Uptown District. And we reached out to Chief Kitz Miller, and he is going to help start giving us a quarterly safety report or something to that effect. That's a, a new aim that, that I wanted to bring in, just to help and enhance safety, and make sure that all of the building owners and business owners know how to handle some of the, you know, the little annoyances that might be happening around town. So any questions for us?
Questions, go ahead, Steve.
So obviously, two major accomplishments. Well, one done, one in the working on it. With the Streetscape being done, and that was a two-year project, and now we've got the Plaza, which is gonna be completed by the end of this calendar year. How do you see those two projects helping? Or are you seeing more, a higher level of interest in filling up, filling in some of the vacancies that are in the Uptown area? So with those, are people waiting for those projects to get done as they want to fill some of those vacancies, or do they need to get done first? It's kind of like chicken or the egg. Last one, just asking for your, the level of interest and your opinion.
Yeah, great question. We have not seen the amount of interest in businesses coming to Uptown slow down at all, actually, since COVID. What we are seeing, even through Streetscape, some people said, I wanna get in before the Streetscape's done, because we know that that's gonna be hot commodities after the Streetscape's done. So where we did think that the Streetscape would slow people and make them cautious to come here, it actually did not, according to our data of keeping track of who's inquiring. The properties that are vacant now all have unique circumstances, I would say. So we do try to play matchmaker between the businesses that come in, working with our Realtor professionals to try to also help us match those properties, those businesses. A lot of them are historic buildings with unique challenges and aren't set up for every type of business. And so it's, I think, working with you guys on the vacant building policy is gonna help with that. We have a real estate showcase that Will is helping us plan for the spring. But yes, we are trying to get some of those vacant spots filled, but it's not because there isn't demand for them.
I think another thing that will help is the, the parking study that's going forward right now, as we get more information about, or more information to put out about that. Every once in a while, we do hear concerns of, you know, I have a business, but I don't know if there's enough parking. I think we're seeing that there, there's a perception of not enough parking, but not actually a shortage of parking. So as we can show that data, I think that will help as well.
Yeah, I think that that perception thing is something we have to stay on top of, to keep addressing that and dispelling it. It's a, just a natural thing, I think, that lots of communities face that have an active area that's desired, so. And I think from the state of the city, there were several people there who were there who, I think, became more interested in, in looking at Uptown. So. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Oh.
Brooke, could you give a little description and kind of a status update on considerations surrounding the SMID? And I think that self-improvement municipal, tell us what the acronym is.
In Iowa, we call it a SMID, Self-Supervised Municipal Improvement District. Everywhere in the United States, they call it a BID, a Business Improvement District. I think Illinois has some SSA, so lots of confusing acronyms. Yes, so we've been talking about it for a little while. In the fall, we did a building owners' meeting where we talked about it a little bit more. This spring, we did another meeting that we dove deeper into what it is and got some really great feedback at that meeting from the building owners. From that, we established that we need to do some more outreach to the businesses to see what they would like. We need to work with our city partners a little bit more to establish what exactly is services above and beyond current city services. That was a big question from the building owners. And then we, so we'll do surveying, and then lastly, we'll get a small group of building owners together that will really start to determine what direction we go from this. So right now, we have a lot of great data collected, but we still have more work to do. Quite a ways to go with that.
So is it reasonable to think by the time everybody goes through the necessary review, due diligence, that it would be a couple of years out before anything would materialize, or would it be further than that? Or too, or too early to tell?
Yeah, the soonest, if, if the building owners were to move forward with this, a petition could come by the end of the year to City Council. And then that would, if, I have to double-check on this, but it's up to the county, right? For timelines. So then taxes would be collected next year, and then the following year, that pool of funding would be available.
All right. Thanks for that background. Appreciate it.
Yes.
Other questions? Thank you for everything you're doing.
Um, you will hear more from us about the transformational strategies. That process is, we do community surveying. We will be doing a lot of diving into our market study and research. And then we will have some input sessions for what that looks like. So we will be back for more on transformational strategies.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next presentation is from Tracy Akkemback with the Housing Fund of Lynn County.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. No, I am not. Kesha Billings, Senior Planner here with the city. I want to take a moment to introduce Tracy. She has been fundamental in helping us getting to this point that we are able to provide a housing rehab program for residents of Marion. And so Tracy, so Tracy Akkemback is, is Executive Director of the Housing Fund for Lynn County. She wears a number of hats regarding housing in Lynn County, but today she's gonna talk about her main role with the Housing Fund. Thank you, Tracy.
Thanks.
Welcome.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Council. So yeah, your housing rehab program, I'm gonna back up just a bit, because I wanna say thank you so much, because you gave Housing Trust, you gave money from the city of Marion to the Housing Trust Fund, and the Housing Trust Fund contracts with EC cog for staffing, including me. I'm the Housing Director at EC cog. And. But you're giving the Housing Trust Fund, the five hundred and thirty thousand for the Marion Rehab Program, allowed me to use some of that money to apply to the housing program, the Housing Trust Fund program at the state. So this, we are a certified Housing Trust Fund in the state. It means that we're the only entity in Lynn County that can apply to the Iowa Finance Authority for those dollars, and it requires a twenty-five percent local match. We've been very fortunate, because the amount keeps going up. Housing Trust Fund dollars across the state, all of the state is now covered by a Housing Trust Fund, and those dollars that we get are partly determined by population. And as you know, we're very fortunate to be in an area that is growing, and some parts of Iowa are not. So we have been continually getting more funding. That also means, though, that we have to have a twenty-five percent local match. So thank you so much for being willing to provide the money for the housing rehab program through the Housing Trust Fund, because that really helped me out this year. It will help me out next year, probably, when I apply. And next year is really this year, because it will be in the fall, but for next year. But anyway, thanks a lot. The Housing Trust Fund is a five oh one C three. That's a requirement of being a Housing Trust Fund. I have a twelve-member Board of Directors. Kesha is one of them. And I would like the city to continue to have representation on the Board of Directors. We have, since we started, which was in two thousand and eight, we have gotten over six million dollars in Iowa Finance Authority dollars, and we've combined that with local match dollars. We've also been able to, was I supposed to do something? Okay. I hope not, because I'm challenged. But. But we've also been operating a Federal Home Loan Bank Owner Occupied Rehab Program. It's, it hasn't been a huge program, but we've operated it outside of the city limits of Cedar Rapids. So we have helped some Marion residents with that program in the past. We have a program that was just funded for this year. So we have some of those dollars also. But as I mentioned, then, we also then contracted EC cog for the administration and the construction management for programs such as your program and our FHLB program. And then also, you know, we had the Patch Program, which was the program that we rolled out intended to help people impacted by the derecho. And we've helped a lot of Marion residents with that, too. I would say probably a lot of mobile homeowners, because we could use our funding for mobile homeowners. We received right out of the chute, almost immediately, from United Way and the Greater Cedar Rapids Community Foundation, some funding. In the end, they ended up giving the Patch Program one point four million. The city of Cedar Rapids gave a million, and then Lynn County gave a million. So we've combined that for the three point four. And we've now helped, gosh, I think, over two hundred and seventy-five homeowners. And we have some funding left that we're trying to use, and we continue to use a lot of that. But we also run that through the Housing Trust Fund. So Mark Culver is here. He's the, the Housing Inspector at EC cog. He's done, he is doing your program with your homeowners. And he and I came some time ago to meet with city staff about a potential housing rehab program. So really, the, the rules of the program were developed by your city staff. But the homeowners that we're assisting have to own and occupy the home as their primary residence. They have to be low to moderate income, below eighty percent median income, and they have to have homeowner's insurance. And so on the slide, you can see the income levels for someone by household size right now. Those income levels change. Those are HUD income levels, and they change every year. Usually sometime between March and, and May, those new guidelines come out. So it was your decision then to provide twenty thousand in grant assistance per property. And one of the rules that you have is that no more than forty percent of the money spent on a property can be for interior, because obviously you want to benefit from the exterior of the properties. You want to, to help homeowners be able to make exterior repairs. So we rolled out the program, Deanna Robinson in, in my department also. She worked with the homeowner. She took a lot of phone calls. I think if I add these up that she has on here, that's over fifty phone calls from, from people. She also prepared announcements for the program. Homeowners then completed applications, submitted them to EC cog. Deanna then verified their income eligibility and then their property eligibility. And then once she does that, she turns it over to Mark, and he goes and meets with the homeowners, does a property inspection, develops the scope of work, puts it out, requests for bid amounts, and then schedules work in the final inspection. And we find with a lot of homeowners, it's very helpful to them to have someone else involved in it, to work with the contractors and, you know, just to help them move along with the project. I think it gives homeowners comfort, and sometimes maybe helps the contractors, too, to have someone else. So so far, we have received fifty-four applications. So what we were thinking, I think, and you were thinking at the time you developed this, is that you would help maybe about twenty-five homeowners. So we received fifty-four applications. Twenty-three of those have been approved. We do try and find, Deanna tries to find ways to help if, if they meet another criteria that might be able to be assisted in another program. We might shift them to that so that we can spread your dollars with the applications that we have. So four of the households have been referred to the Patch Program. And then we only had three out of all those applicants that weren't actually income-qualified. We have nineteen on a waiting list. The Iowa Finance Authority announced a program through their homeownership fund. It was for mortgage assistance through the pandemic, and now it's shifted to also for a rehab program. And they announced that, and that closes at the end of March right now, but we've been able to refer some households that are on our waiting list, that are not gonna be able to be assisted with your funds. We've, we've tried to refer them to the Iowa Finance Authority program. And five of those have ended up being approved for that program. So that's been a good thing. So your program extends itself beyond, because people found out about your program, and then we were able to put them into other programs. So right now, Mark has inspected eighteen homes. Five are in progress, seven are out to bid right now. Two homes were not eligible, and I'm guessing because of interior-exterior ratio.
Correct.
Okay. And then we have three that are completed, and one is partially. We had someone who was waiting to, you know, they're on the list, because we're trying to process everybody, first come, first served, the best that we can. And one person, though, had a furnace go out, so we ended up doing at least that part of it, and we'll finish the rest of the project when their, their name comes up, which I'm not sure is that.
But I, we already did a pre-construction meeting for the windows.
Okay, great. And then the last slide is just. Kesha asked us to show kind of the area of where the applications are from, or the participating homes are from. And as you can see that, you know, you did open the program up to the entire community, so we, it's probably maybe broader in scope. I know, Mayor, you and I have talked about it before, maybe broader in scope than what you were thinking, but it is helping a lot of homeowners. And I think that. Well, never mind. I'm not gonna finish that statement. So. Any questions about it?
I have a question. Can you go back two slides? So the two homes that were ineligible, those, they were, they're among the, the twenty-three approved applications?
No, I think the twenty-three approved would be the ones that we.
Okay.
We have ready. I'm actually trying to slow them down a bit, because I, I want to be able to use some of your funds for my application this year for the Housing Trust Fund. And I have to actually not pay out those dollars until two thousand and twenty-five. I did not imagine that they would move so quickly through so many. So I'm imagining, though, because of contractor availability, you know, we, we have five in construction, but seven out to bid, and by the time we work through all of those. But I would say, Mayor, the two that are not eligible are not part of the twenty-three that have been approved.
I, I'm just misunderstood how you said that, but. So the additional funds you're getting from the, you're using the funds to apply for trust fund dollars, the additional funds go into your overall program? They don't, they're not Marion-specific?
The additional funds.
You said you, you use for local match, you use our, our five hundred thousand for local match.
Yeah.
To apply for state.
Yep. And I, and so as long as those funds come through the Housing Trust Fund, I can count them as local match. But they're a dedicated, like on my financials, there's a dedicated line for Marion Rehab, and that's the only thing those five hundred and thirty thousand are used for, is that.
But the additional funds that are obtained using that money as local match, those don't go to Marion?
You mean like, I, I'm sorry, because I think I probably missed.
That you're applying to the Iowa Finance.
Oh, the Iowa Finance Authority, no, their program is a separate thing. It's just that homeowners heard about your program. They had to be on a waiting list, so then we tried to get them in other programs. Those programs, the Iowa Finance Authority program does not run through the Housing Trust Fund. I know, that's confusing, isn't it? Let's say, let me say it this way. The half program, which is Housing Assistance Fund program that they have for rehab, they have just asked us to provide the inspectors for their program. But we've just tried to find ways that we could help people that were on your waitlist. So I'm just saying, you know, you know, we're looking at being able to help maybe twenty-five through yours, but we've been able, because they heard about your, your program, we've been able to refer some to Patch and some to the Iowa Finance Authority's program, so more people beyond just the ones assisted with your dollars are impacted, if that makes sense now.
When you're applying for, you said you're using it as local match. So what's the local match for?
The local match is, any local match that I get, if it's not designated to a program like your housing rehab program, if it's local match that a community gives me for something, or if it's a lender will give me funds. Usually, I'm very fortunate to get some funds from lenders. I combine that with the IFA dollars, and then that gets paid out to individuals, whoever the projects that we're funding.
Program overall.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And I neglected to say, when we, we normally have, we don't normally work with homeowners directly. The Housing Trust Fund makes funds available to organizations, and then those organizations apply to us for either grants or loans. So right now, we have a grant round open. We have three hundred and fifty thousand made available to organizations to apply to the Housing Trust Fund. We just closed a loan round where we made two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So that's where those dollars, like the local dollars, that aren't tied to a particular program, we put those with the IFA dollars to make them available. Does that make more sense? Thanks for giving me a chance to say about the grants and loans, because that would be not very good of me to forget that part.
Some of them will benefit Marion residents, because they do.
Would, would you mind speaking in the microphone, because of the, we're recording the meeting. Thank you.
So some of those IFA funds that we normally get will go to Marion homes, but they're not specifically dedicated. Some of those have been used for local match for FHLB programs that we also run, which greatly assists Marion residents as well. But they're not specific for Marion residents.
Okay.
Yeah. And we have, we have awarded some rent assistance programs, like by Will Estate or Waypoint, and those have been maybe for some renters in Marion as well. I'm sorry, did you?
So my question is about the contractors. So have you had any difficulty finding contractors for these smaller projects? And then the follow-up question is, once you find contractors that have been doing the kind of work that you want them to do, do you keep using them, or do you try to spread it out? I was curious how that whole aspect is working.
So we've had, we have contractors kind of on a contact list. There are probably twenty contractors or so that have been, we've been using for several years for different programs throughout the agency. And so after the derecho, they weren't very hungry.
Exactly.
Busy. And, and we've been, as Tracy stated, we've kind of been going through these projects pretty quick, because it seems this year, they've been more hungry this year than the past few years. So they were fortunate in that we have a list of contractors that are willing to work on a lot of these, like you say, smaller projects, and the, these are all homeowner projects. And the great thing is, is if they're contractors that we typically use, they know their program. They know the guidelines. They know what they need to do. A lot of contractors don't wanna work with us, simply because we don't pay any money upfront. We can only pay completed line item.
Okay.
And so they know the program. They know what's gonna be expected, and they know what quality work's gonna be expected. And so since they know all that, it, it makes it kind of an easier transition to, you know, do different programs with them throughout.
Anyone else have questions?
Can I add one more thing?
Yeah, please.
Another Marion thing, because looking at Will makes me think of this. Another, another way we have used Housing Trust Fund dollars is we have helped with down payment assistance for the buyers of the Medco Student Homes. And so that's another way that we've used Housing Trust Fund dollars in Marion specifically. And so that's another way that we've used Housing Trust Fund dollars in Marion specifically. I didn't, before I came, I didn't go through all of our our homes to see how many folks we have outside of your program we've helped, but I know there's been a lot. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming in. Okay, our next presentation is Traffic Engineering Assistance Program. Mike?
Yeah, so I have Tim here with Schneider Associates that did the report, but I want to back up a little bit and kind of give the reasoning of why we do these report and what this is. So this is the Traffic Engineering Assistance Program. So this is the program, the DOT supplies, where we go out as staff and we'll do traffic counts. We give all the traffic counts, the consultant and the consultant gives us the full-blown report. They pay up to a hundred hours of that consultant time since we don't have a traffic engineer on staff. So as you may recall, we've gotten a lot of requests for signals, churn lanes, speed reduction, a lot of requests on the whole thirteen corridor. One of those requests, we were finding that we were starting to meet some warrants and it didn't make sense particularly at that intersection, so we wanted to look at the entire study at once. And just see, you know, what is the total scope of that? And so that's what this report is. The one that's included in the council packet is only thirty-five pages. The full report is two hundred and ninety-eight pages. So if anybody wants the full report, let me know, I'll get it to you.
That would be no. Come on, Grant. You can't resist.
So Tim here with Schneider Associates is going to give a rundown of the report. So again, we're we're, there's a lot here. You're going to learn some probably some new acronyms. Talk about some high-speed roundabouts and some fun stuff here. But so we're looking at the total picture and then when he gets done, I'll kind of wrap it up and talk about next steps.
Welcome, Tim.
Thank you. He said, I'm Tim Crouch with Snyder Associates Traffic Engineer. I was the lead engineer on the study. I was just going to go through real quick what we did for the study and then the results of the study. So the quarter that we looked at, we looked at it from, are we from Iowa one hundred north up to Rec Drive? So we looked at a total of eight intersections. Those circled in red, six of those we have recommendations for. There's two that are shown there in green that we did not have any recommendations to improve those intersections. So first we looked at the crash history and what the DOT has a new process they're using to kind of stratify intersections and segments. For crash data, it's called potential for crash reduction or PCR data. So it kind of tells you how those intersections are doing compared to rather similar type intersections within the state. We also looked at the traffic volumes. We use the volumes collected by the city. We looked at DOT historical traffic volumes and we got traffic forecasts from the local MPO. We prepared twenty forty-five AM and PM turning movement forecast to use in our study. We use those volumes to do the traffic analysis of the intersections, both existing and the recommended configurations. We looked at the need for left turn and right turn lanes at the intersections that didn't have them currently. We evaluated them MUTCD signal warrant criteria for the unsignalized intersections using the current traffic volumes. Signals are warranted based on existing volumes. We don't look at future for that. Then we determined the lane configurations and turn lane lengths for the intersections that needed those and recommended changes in any traffic control that is needed to the intersections. And the last thing we do is we use the Iowa DOT's access management manual. We looked at the current access control throughout the study corridor. Righted some access management recommendations on that. The access along thirteen is very well controlled right now. We just have intersections about every quarter mile. So the the access that we really looked at is the adjacent accesses along the intersections, side streets. So I start at the north end. We don't have a slide here for Rec Drive, but Rec Drive, we do not recommend any improvements there. There's not a lot of traffic volume currently there. So this one is for Noel Road and Twenty-Ninth Avenue. This intersection met the signal warrants today. If a signal is installed to improve the operation efficiency of that signal, we would want to see left turn lanes on the side street, eastbound right turn and left turn, then a westbound left turn lane. Eastbound right turn is the highest volume on that side street. And today that's that is where the majority of the crashes are happening, is that right turn traffic. Construct a southbound right turn lane. There's a good volume of right turners there. That right turn helps to get those turning vehicles out of the through lanes, reduces the potential of crashes. Then we looked at alternative intersection alignments. As an alternative to traffic signals, we could look at a multi-lane roundabout at this intersection. If you do a roundabout, you don't need any of those turn lanes, just the lanes that are there today. Moving down south to Prairie Ridge Avenue. Recommended remaining two-way stop control. It does not currently meet any signal warrants. We would suggest consideration of restricting the turning movements as traffic volumes increase and as crashes or other operational issues come along. And what we mean by restricting movements, you could either allow the left turns off of Thirteenth Street, but restrict any left turns off the side street. The next step would be to close the median and make those right in, right out, so that you can only turn right onto Prairie Drive, Prairie Avenue, or turn right off of that. The next one south is Casino Avenue. This one too meets this traffic signal warrants, so the same type of recommendation to install traffic signals. To construct the eastbound right turn and left turn lanes and a westbound left turn lane. Then if signalized, one of the access requirements is that frontage road that's on the east side there coming up on the south. Ideally, we'd like to see a hundred and fifty feet between the intersection and that, just to prevent any conflict between that intersection and the signalized intersection. So if signals are installed, you'd want to be look at separating that side street a little bit. A northbound right turn lane, it will also be recommended at this intersection. And again, here, an alternative would be a multi-lane roundabout with no additional turn lanes needed. This is just to give you an idea what a multi-lane roundabout would be. We say multi-lane, but it's two lanes, north, south, and a single lane east-west to match the existing roadway alignments and configurations. And this is kind of an idea of what these three intersections could look like. I drew black lines across the median there showing that that median at Prairie Avenue would be Prairie Ridge would be closed off with two roundabouts. People can make a right turn and go up to the roundabout, make a U-turn. With signals, we would want to, we would recommend that as that air that land in the northeast area there develops, that those roads be extended and provide access up to Fredo Road, so that anybody that in this area in the middle could either go north or south to a signal to access Iowa thirteen. At Hennessy, no initial changes are recommended. It operates well today. We could see though, as eastbound traffic increases, you could eventually have a need for a right turn in a through lane and a left turn lane to to provide for more efficient signal operations there. This next one's a little bit controversial. I know the signal just went in about three years ago and a lot of improvements were made there, but inconsistency with DOT access management and control of intersections and corridors like this, they like to keep the signals at half-mile spacing, which allows for better progression along the main road. This intersection is a little less than halfway between the two signals, or the could potentially be a signal at Casino. So we're recommending consideration of possibly restricting turning movements here as well and also removal of the traffic signal. There is good access to one fifty-one on the east side and Tenth Avenue on the west side that could be used. I know that's that's controversial, would be not well received probably by the businesses that are at intersection either, but just something to consider. Access here is is the same, looking at the east side. We've got that frontage road that serves the houses along the east side of thirteen. That is very close to the intersection. The problem there is if somebody's northbound on thirteen, makes a right turn and wants to immediately turn left and there's traffic waiting at the signal and they can't make that left turn, they sit there and it could create backups onto the to the highway. This one's a little more difficult to deal with. It would require right-of-way purchases to relocate that access road to either line up with Carlson or to relocate it completely behind the houses and run on the backside. On the east side, the the two businesses there have driveways right away there from the intersection, same thing there. Those can lead to some operational issues. They both have access off of Red Fox Way. So if issues develop with those two driveways, you can create a median, close that left turns in and out. And then they can access off of Red Fox. That's another, I didn't mention that on the east side too. That's another way to deal with that left turn issue is construct a raised median there to prevent that left turn onto the frontage road. At one fifty-one, we didn't recommend any changes there. The intersection's operating operationally well today. It does have the highest number of crashes in the corridor as far as intersection-related crashes. So that is something that to look at. I know that the city installed automated traffic enforcement cameras there and that may help with those crashes that are occurring today. At Lanair, this intersection today has very minimal turn lanes. It has an eastbound right turn lane. Kind of today, there's a lot of right turning traffic on that. Coming out of that west side, we recommend extending that right turn lane up to a hundred and fifty feet, which takes it around the corner there and back to the north towards Walmart. On the west side, but also recommend a left turn lane and then a northbound right turn lane. Similar type issues with access here. On the east side, we've got the the access to the outdoor storage place there. It doesn't generate a lot of traffic, so there's probably not a lot of issues there today, but as if those issues develop, again, you can create a raised median to prevent that left turn. Or you can relocate that access further east. On the west side, there's the driveway to help electric motors. Today it looks like the the peak hours are a little different. The peak hour for traffic on Lanair Drive is later in the morning and later in the afternoon than when the employees arrive and leave. So we don't see an issue with it today, but if it does develop become an operational issue, there's, we need to look at some alternatives for that access as well. And the last intersection to the south, Iowa one hundred. There, there's a large volume of eastbound right turn to northbound. Corresponding volume southbound to westbound. Then there's also a large volume of northbound right turners there as well. To deal with that eastbound right turn or left turns or recommending taking, there's currently a a dedicated left turn lane and then there's then there's a through and a left turn lane shared. We're recommending taking that shared left and through and making that a left turn only. Putting the through lane in what is currently the right turn lane and then construct eastbound right turn lane. And then on the west, the westbound, that left turn lane is a little short for the queues we were seeing in the analysis. So we're recommending to extend that out to a hundred and twenty-five feet. Then with that pattern of traffic we saw, we didn't have the scope in this project to do origin destination, to look at, follow that traffic through and see if it's turning north and then making a a right onto US one fifty-one. But if that is the case, we thought one way of trying to reduce that and improve some of the operations at this intersection would be to provide an alternative traffic that's headed further east on one fifty-one. Could take like an east bypass shown by the red line on the Seacrest Road and then I think it's Hinman Road to the north. Hinman currently isn't fully paved, so that would probably be what would need to be done to make this a viable alternative. Then maybe we would take some of the traffic out of the one fifty-one intersection that's going north and even possibly in the reverse coming east and then south to Iowa one hundred.
Is that Hinman? Is that Hinman Road?
Hinman, yes. I said that would need to take some further study and see if that really is the true pattern that's being followed and what kind of traffic that would pull out of these two intersections. Both of those intersections are very high volume and we had a lot of, we had some issues trying to get good operations at the one hundred intersection because of the large volumes of turning traffic. And high volumes of through traffic. There's one thing I didn't mention, I just realized on the that first slide. The map of the corridor, I had the traffic volumes on there. Those numbers on the right side with the white boxes, there's twenty-two thousand vehicles a day south between Army, between Iowa one hundred and US one fifty-one. Then when we get north of there, it drops down to seventeen thousand four hundred. Further north you go, it drops even further towards about nine thousand at the north end. Then there's some other just corridor-wide type recommendations to improve safety and in the corridor. First one is that if right turn and left turn lanes are instructed on Iowa thirteen, they should be offset. The picture there on the right shows what an offset offset right turn lane is. And what it does is it separates them from the through lane further, so the traffic on the side street can see what's coming up alongside the right turning traffic. When they're parallel and side by side, that right turning vehicle can shadow the through traffic and we've seen cars, drivers pull out in front of that through traffic. Left turn offset is what you have at Hennessy today. And and several other intersections within the corridor and on one fifty-one. So that would be for left turn lanes. At the signalized intersections, the crash history shows a lot of rear-end crashes, which is common on high-speed signalized intersections. One thing that's been effective in increasing awareness of the signals and getting people to notice them even more is to put that yellow reflective material around the backplate on the signal. Really shines at night and on an overcast day, it helps just draw more attention up to the signal ads. So that could help with the rear-end crashes that are occurring today. And then I know from experience at this corridor, the city has been interested. The citizens have been interested in slower speed limits along the corridor. With the increasing traffic volume, the improvements made at Hennessy, we saw that there's been enough changes and increased development in traffic that we would recommend conducting a new speed study in the corridor to see if there's a possibility of getting those speed limits. That's also one benefit I'm sure most people are aware of here. With the number of roundabouts you have in the community, putting roundabouts in this corridor at those two intersections would help to slow traffic down quite a bit because they would have to slow down fifteen, twenty miles an hour entering those. Not with that, that's the all the recommendation. This is my contact information. And take any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions?
Yeah, you you described for the Hennessy and Pawnee intersection that further review and study of removal of the traffic signals and restricted medians should be considered. What can you recap again? What's the driving basis for that? I because quite honestly, when those went in, I was absolutely enthused.
Yeah. A lot of the reasoning for that is as your. A lot of the reasoning for that is as your trip volume will increase on thirteen. Provide better signal operations, the the more equally spaced your signals are, the better progression you can get for traffic through those. The ideal spacing would be half mile. And that way you can get good progression both northbound and southbound. So the DOT and other similar corridors has been doing that to where they allow intersections every quarter mile. They've been allowing signals every half mile. And then at the quarter mile, they either restrict the left turns to left turns in only or left turns off the highway. And then force the the drivers to go to the adjacent signals to access the highway. Um, it reduces conflicts in the intersection, in the corridor as well. At this intersection with the signal control, the left turns and the conflicts are pretty well um controlled. But as we see with the other intersections like one fifty-one, the signal itself leads to more crashes with the rear end crashes and and other running traffic signal type crashes, just people not making the right moves. If it's not protected only left turns, you have missive left turns. You still have a left turn conflict there as well. So removal would decrease the potential and reduce the conflict points as well as improve through operations in the corridor.
Well.
So.
Well, you mentioned a doing a speed study, wouldn't reduce speed eliminate some of the conflicts that you just um made observation of with within its current configuration?
Yes, they would.
Okay.
The tricky part is just lowering the speed limit does not automatically lead to slower speeds.
Right.
So that's where the study comes in and we like to believe that drivers, most drivers will follow the speed limit. So they're they're also actually driving at the speed that they feel safe in the corridor. So if we set the speed limit where most of the drivers are, we have good compliance. It takes less enforcement. And that's what, and then that, but typically the DOT has looked at the eighty-fifth percentile speed, which is the speed limit, speed that eighty-five percent of the drivers are driving at or less. So if we set the speed limit there, you got automatically, you'll get eighty-five percent compliance and you'll have to worry about the fifteen percent above that. Um, new guidance is coming out in the new M U T C D that doesn't recommends not just relying on eighty-fifth percentile, but looking at other things within the corridor, crash history, traffic volumes, access control, um, adjacent development, turning volumes, that kind of thing. So I know the DOT is trying to get their hands around that, figure out how to implement that and looking at some expert systems. So it would be, I I believe that a new speed study will look a little bit different than past ones have where they've solely focused on that eighty-fifth percentile for the most part.
Hey Sarah and then Will and then.
This might include Mike because I'm kind of melding a couple of things, but um. So when you look at these, I'm the signal intersection we were just talking about and I'm more of a landmark type of a person. So if I start referencing what's around it instead of the road, please pardon me. But I'm wondering when we do these studies and this kind of goes into like the comp plan update we're looking at for this part of the corridor as well. So we've got this going on. We're looking at these recommendations, got a comp plan. I think about that signalized intersection we were just discussing and I'm like, okay, those are high, those are high traffic businesses um that are in those spaces and then to the east, I think about the hotel, you've got a a the gas station, on the other side, you've got Culvers that we all know is very attended. But then, you know, if you go down into the other sections, you're looking at like a Hup Electric. Well, they don't have that same kind of volume when we're looking at those intersections or potentially. So we don't take how much consideration into like the zoning parts of this or what those could be as far as how much traffic is there based on those traffic counts plays into this. And then how does our work with the future comp plan play into this as well?
So when we do um the analysis, so let's say we're doing a brand new intersection. So doing trip generation based on the zoning. So you know it's going to generate so many trips. So that's how the comp plan plays into it. Now, when we do a report like this, this is completely what Tim does is takes the values that we actually count in the field. And then he uses a forecast to forecast how much they're going to increase in twenty forty-five.
Okay.
So we're taking real data and forecasting it for the future. Versus the comp plan is just going to look at land use and if it's zone industrial versus zone commercial, it's going to have different trip generations.
Okay. And so what, how does the timing of this interact with the timing of the work on the comp?
So your comp plan is going to have your road network in it, but it's not necessarily going to have what every intersection should be signalized or not signalized or how long a turn lane should be. So this is getting more granular than the comp plan.
Thank you. Thank you.
Will?
First a comment and then a question. Um, you had mentioned the uh future study of Seacrest to Hinman for that kind of that cut through that potentially could be happening. Let's say a yearish ago, I was meeting with the property owner that lives north of one fifty-one on Hinman. And that Hinman to Fernal is getting tons of cut through traffic. They were show, I mean, they were telling me and showing me while I was there, all the semis that were cutting through. So they didn't have to go through all the stoplights once they got to uh the one fifty-one thirteen intersection and going north. So they were cutting through there anyway. So.
So they were cutting to the north.
They were cutting to the north to avoid coming into town in the stoplights. Um, my question would be now that we have this study, what is, and maybe you were going to address this afterwards, or what's the next steps with this study?
Yeah, when you go into all the other questions, I'll.
You're going to get into it? Okay, good deal.
Okay, so you've got a couple of uh possible suggestions about roundabouts. Obviously, the 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 larger roundabouts on County Home Road are working, I think, very well. These roundabouts, because they're two lanes in each direction, would be larger, quite a bit larger than those on County Home Road, right? Because those are that's uh, because we're talking about a larger, wider road here on thirteen.
Yeah, you'd have a larger diameter circle.
Right. So my question is, in your, in your report, you talk about the cost of uh conversion to a roundabout, about two to two and a half million dollars. And then you talk about the cost for traffic signalization and adding each of the turn lanes. So at what point does, and if you're talking about these turn lanes, and if we talk about, or uh, we talk about uh twenty-ninth Avenue and Fernal Road. So if we talk about that one, for example, you've got at least four turn lanes in there. And so you start adding up the cost of traffic signalization and and uh turn lanes, you start approaching, at least getting closer to the cost of a roundabout. So what is your opinion on that cost variance from signalization, roundabout and turned lane cost versus a roundabout? And is there any difference in funding sources, one versus the other, as the state may look at it?
Start with the easiest one. There is no difference in funding sources for them.
Okay.
That I can think of off the top of my head. Um, the balance between them, like you said, is as you start building, reconstructing the intersection with all the turn lanes, it starts to get close to the same cost as a roundabout.
Yeah.
Um, long-term site lifecycle costs. Uh, when you consider the the operation costs of the signals and maintaining the extra pavement out there, the roundabout typically over the life cycle of the projects will be cheaper than signals and intersection improvements.
And the added benefit of a roundabout that you've already pointed out is that roundabout will actually slow down traffic. Versus even if you lower the speed limit out there, that may not do it as well as the roundabout.
Yeah. The two lane roundabouts don't perform as well as single lane roundabouts, safety wise. So you you won't see as much of a safety improvement as you do with the smaller roundabouts. But they will be much safer than a traffic signal. Fewer crashes as well.
So some of the funding that we go after is Traffic Safety Improvement Program. And with that, they do tend to score roundabouts a little bit higher because they have a better uh lowering of crashes versus the signal. Because you got to remember with the signal, you're likely going to have smear end collisions because people aren't paying attention. Versus the roundabout, you help reduce that and hopefully they're driving slower speeds and so the accidents are not as severe. Um, so that would be one potential source of of funding that we would go after is the T-SIP.
Yeah, typically when, you know, safety review funds for signals, they assume no reduction in crashes when signals. That's kind of their standard and roundabouts has a larger crash modification factor.
Mike, earlier um I I sensed the great disappointment of my colleagues here that I didn't show an exuberant interest in the balance of the report. I would love a copy. Thank you. All right.
The remaining pages are just the data that we used. Traffic.
I knew it. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mike, are you going to talk about what's next?
Yep. So next steps. So on Thursday, we'll receive and file the report. So it'll go into our records. Um, we'll discuss this not only at TAC but uh several meetings uh to kind of figure out where we go from here because obviously if we were to start tomorrow, that's a lot of money to spend. So this is not going to be something that happens overnight. Um, we're going to have to build this into our C I P program. We'll work with our um, public safety members and figure out, you know, is there an intersection that we need to target that one first and address that? Um, when we apply for funding, there's only again so much funding available out there. So we're just going to have to take it a step at a time. This is not something that's going to it's probably ten years until we do all this stuff. So it's but this is a good start. Again, the a normal TIP is one or two intersections. We studied several in this case. So it was a a a good um thing to do. One other thing to kind of mention is this is technically all DOT right away. So anything that we want to do, we have to get partnership with them. Uh, we have meetings with them all the time. So um and obviously they help pay for this study. So I don't know if they're going to say no to everything, but that is something to keep in mind is you may say, well, I want this or this. We do have to work with them. So.
We can blame it on them.
So with it being partnership with the DOT. Since it's all within the city of lim, city limits of Marion, that means we have to pay for all of it? Or is there any partnership on paying for things with the DOT?
So there's some different programs that they have in there uh based on because it is on the primary uh that we can go after that we haven't traditionally done. So T-SIP is one that we can put anywhere as long as it's meeting a safety demand. But there's some other ones that we can go after that might be forty-five percent city and different ones that are mentioned in the report that we can look into and dive in. But like I said, this is a huge report and we got to, it's like everything else, dissect it and take it bye bye, bite by bite. So.
One more question, Brad?
Mike, which is there any one of these intersections that is absolutely on the top of the hit list? The most critical one to address as soon as possible?
I don't know if there's one that needs immediate. I would probably say the business one was twenty-ninth. Um, that's why we were a little surprised uh when we started meeting warrants on some of the the other intersections that we didn't think were as busy. And so that's kind of why we said, let's look at this holistically and look at everything that needs to happen. But based on the recommendations, I would say twenty-ninth Avenue would probably be the the first one that we would take a look at, but talking to, I'll have to talk to my peers and make sure they're on the same page.
Thanks. Brian has a comment or question?
I was just going to add as as a close up, um during my my check in with a couple of council members, uh council member Miskin had asked um, similar to what Will was asking, okay, what's, what are the next steps and the decision points along the way of how do you decide with the the signalization or the roundabout and just so for for the council and and the viewing audience at home, as 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 the staff goes through and starts working through, you know, with the TAC and and kind of um, mapping it out, there will be decision points along the way that we'll want to make sure we're coming back to get councils input on. So we can continue those conversations with our partners at IDOT. So um, I I wanted to be responsive to Councilman Miskin's uh question. I know he can't be here today, but I wanted to certainly share that. So this is not the the first time that you'll see it before we're, it's now being rolled into a C I P. So.
That's very timely that we're looking at all this, uh, you know, the development on that side of town is only going to increase and uh, so we're going to I mean, the sooner we start looking at it and planning for it, because you said it's going to be several years, uh, the better, you know, so to get kind of get, get out ahead of the explosion of development out there as much as we can. So. Okay, any other questions? Thank you for all your work on this. All right, the next item is uh budget discussion. Brian? It's five oh five. It says five oh five.
Evening Mayor and Council. So this is a nice position as we talk about the C I P. So um, this is an update on the fiscal year twenty-five through twenty-nine C I P. Just a recap of the timeline, how we get here. Uh, this is a process that started back in August with the department heads. Um, then we moved uh through the planning stage and then there was a draft presented at the budget work session and this is our chance here to give you an update of any changes that have come about uh since the budget work session as we move towards adoption in April. So I just wanted to break this into two categories here. Um, the first category is the changes that um were under the direction uh that we talked about at the budget work session. So again, this is the fiscal year twenty-five through uh twenty-nine view. The ones that we had talked about here, just to recap, were um some increases that we saw in costs. Um, those are the ones that say update on the left hand side and then under the direction with the feedback that we got of council at the at the work session was to add the Irish Drive traffic signal activation. So we did add that in for fiscal year twenty-seven. So um, that should be fairly familiar. So then the next section, and then I'll 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 pause for questions after.
Will has a question on on the Irish Drive. Well, no, on this slide.
Oh, on this.
Update Draper Park, one hundred fifty thousand. I know it came in seventy percent of of uh estimated costs. Does that hundred fifty still apply to this? I mean, I don't know what the difference is that thirty percent.
That is a bit.
That's still needed.
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry. So then the second category um is some additional changes that we uh we made since the budget work session. So um just going to name them here. So the library generator, we did receive a grant. There was some council action uh last year. Um, so we did add that in to the C I P since it meets the requirements. That's a fifty percent local option sales tax and I I made a fifty percent match uh with the grant. We had, there was a couple of our annual programs that we just hadn't plugged in as fiscal year twenty-nine. So we thought to be consistent, we plugged them in. They're funded from the respective utility funds. There was a couple of asset replacement items that met the C I P threshold um of the ten years and the over twenty-five thousand. So we did add those in. And then we removed the uh Parkland acquisition. Um, with that being developer driven, we saw that there was uh that was not moving forward. And so we did not want to bond any money for a project that's not moving forward at this time, but and uh then the last one, so the funding source was still there under local option sales tax. There was just an update that I had to make on the C I P document uh for the neighborhood streets improvement program. So that was just an administrative update. So. Any questions on the additional changes?
Go ahead. So Brian, on this library generator is an uh ad for two hundred thousand. I just did a com- uh looking on the the um project sheet here. I noticed that the City Hall generator is three hundred and fifty K. Is that a, is that simply driven and I'm looking over it toward Terrell? Uh, maybe you know, is it a capacity difference that we're we're trying to between buildings? Um, I I what's, why are they different numbers, I guess, is what I'm asking?
Gary's probably the better person to actually talk about the difference in the building and what size a generator. However, we did work with, uh, we did reach out to Hawkeye Electric just to have, they actually came in a couple. Well, right after I got here and went through the different buildings and provided. What we would need for each of the locations and then gave us an estimate of cost. So that's what we're working off of. Uh, based on the generator size. And with this library generator, there's also, uh, we had a grant opportunity. For the library generator, so that is why um it was added here, which we approved back in June or July.
Okay, so it there's been a capacity study or a load demand studies and that's. What's driving the difference? Okay, thanks.
I'm sorry if I'm not recalling prior discussion on this, but the 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 Parkland acquisition. Removing that. Explain that again. It's, you said it's developer driven, so.
Yeah, the yeah, the the Parkland acquisition would be the neighborhood of Indian Creek, so this should be just located south of Nink or Tower Terrace Road. It's being removed. It's it's owned by developers, but there's really no active development proposals at this time. Um, don't anticipate it occurring in the next several years, so it's just a matter of freeing up the. Freeing that amount from the from the CIP program.
So the park space is still in.
Park space is still in the plan. And it's still the goal unless it changes, of course, by the council, but it's just the time.
On the horizon of that land and so we don't need to have it in here now, but it could go back in or would go back in.
Correct.
Once there's active development.
Yep.
Okay, just understand.
Yeah, Brian, my question is on uh the previous slide. Uh, and that is the Irish Drive traffic signal activi- activation. Uh, you're talking about that is out to fiscal year twenty seven. Can you tell us why it's out that far? Because I think based upon our discussion at the budget meeting, I would have anticipated that to be sooner. Than later. I'm not sure I agree with that far out.
So that was the original um engineers, um that was the original timeline that they had put in. Um, if there is willing from council, we can look at that. Um, Mike can maybe talk some more about that also.
Yeah, that's not, that's not advancing it at all. Right? So that the original budget line, budget date for fiscal year twenty seven for this?
So I think originally it wasn't even in there. And so what we're doing is we we threw it in there as twenty seven. At anticipating the Cedar Albernate being paved. I mean, uh, that's something that we can discuss if if you want to move it up further.
I would, again, my opinion is to move it up. I would look for opinions from the other city council members.
We're gonna have the discussion now. Okay, anyone have any opinions on that?
Well, I would agree with you, but I also work for the Y, but I we see the traffic, the kids, the people crossing the street. Trying to the backup of traffic heading south on Irish Drive, trying to turn left onto Tower Terrace. Drive as that neighborhood and the park activity gets busier and busier. Um, it can back up past the Y's first entrance and all the way to the second with if somebody's going left and you're waiting to go right. Um, so I would agree with you, Steve. I think whether it's. Um, safe crossing the road because that's the only point unless you go all the way down to tenth. And with the increase we're seeing with. The development, I I would agree with you, the sooner rather than later. People don't understand why that. And I think we asked the question once, why can't you just flip the switch, turn it on? And we all found out it's very complicated process, the other things that have to happen. So agree with that. Um, so I understand that, but I think. To the general folks who are sitting at those intersections, coming to tournaments, coming to events. Um, in that area, they don't understand why it's not on, so.
And we've had some communication from the neighborhood also about kids walking to school. There's no sidewalk on East View. And kids needing to take that route to walk, like if they're walking to Indian uh to Novak or having to cross the street.
Yeah, well, I I guess I I'm uh aligned with what Steve and Sarah are thinking on that. I think having that. Made operational sooner rather than later is a good idea. And the other compelling um force there is as soon as that. When whenever that segment of Tower Terrace east of Albern or west of Albern at homes up, I can just see that that's gonna. Have an impact in terms of overall flow uh in that area, so. I guess in order to acquaint people that that is uh operational sooner will benefit when we ultimately open up. Tower Terrace, at least that's what I'm thinking.
Mike, did you say that the full connection to C Avenue won't be until twenty seven?
So at the time when we create a CAPI, again, you got to remember that we don't know exact timing. Um, both segments have been bid, um both Cedar Rapids section and the Marion section. And it should all be paved this construction.
Oh, okay.
But that's just hard when you're planning so far in advance. You don't. A lot of moving parts.
Yeah, then I would be of the same opinion on moving it up, but go ahead.
Yeah, and and I, you know, even the discussion at the budget meeting was we know it doesn't always meet the warrants for turning it on. But again, I use that intersection a lot. And I still continue to see people from in-state, out-of-state. Stopping at that intersection because they think they have to stop. They see the flashing yellow. So I see people continually stopping, not going through. They think they have to stop because they see the yellow light, so. I think just from a safety standpoint and the way the traffic actually works, doing it sooner than later is is of benefit to the community.
Yeah, for whatever reason, it's confusing the people and I I see I see that because I I take that every day several times. So I see that. I see cars not knowing exactly, drivers not knowing exactly what to do there.
Is there a consensus for fiscal year twenty five or twenty six? Because I'm hearing that you do want to move it up, but with, is there any? Any preference given the fiscal year twenty five? In a few months?
What's reasonable?
Yeah, I mean, we can do twenty five. It's gonna take time to design it and do the improvements, bid it, so. If you want it in, I would say twenty five.
Okay. Anyone object to that?
Is there any other questions on on this slide? So I just wanted to kind of give a overview of fiscal year twenty five. So um this is the CIP just for the expenditures, just for fiscal year twenty five. And you can see that we're just over sixty two point or just over sixty million right now. These are the kind of. Uh, big projects that make up about two thirds of the CIP for fiscal year twenty five. Um, so um it's worth noting here that um. That all of these projects are either they're in acquisition stage, they're in design or they're even under construction. With the exception of the Tower Terrace, that's actually the full build out part of Tower Terrace there on the slide, so. That obviously is contingent on the uh on the funding that we continue to apply for. So if there's any specific questions about these kind of major projects for fiscal year twenty five and. This was just a a nice summary of what's for the year ahead.
Those are major projects. Any questions?
That's all I've had under that item.
Okay, any other questions for Brian? Thank you very much. Appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Well, brings us to the agenda review for Thursday. First item that's marked is on the second page of the agenda, uh which is A eight. Anything prior to that item? You have one? Okay, we'll move to A eight and we'll come back to whichever one Will has to has a question on. Brian, okay.
Start forward again. So another transition, um this is, this is the initial auction. For the annual general obligation bond issuance for the CIP for the projects in fiscal year twenty five. So the process here is we will set the public hearing for uh April fourth. And this will al- also authorize the pre levy for the fiscal year twenty five budget, so that. So that's one of the most important things here. After that public hearing, there'll be some additional administrative action in April and May. And then we're targeting a closing in June. Um, but with rates, we'll be monitoring rates um and with the timing of some projects that is subject to change. But right now it's around the June uh timeframe, but we wanted to get the public hearing done. This is um. This is authorizing the max and um. Also authorizes the pre levy for the fiscal year twenty five budget. So I just wanted to highlight that the projects that we intend to bond for for fiscal year twenty five, this should. Tie out for you, for everyone that's into accounting, it should tie out exactly to the CIP uh fiscal year twenty five. Under the geo bond section, so um if there's any questions around that. Then.
Any questions?
Yeah, so uh do I recall correctly a while back when we talked about bonding? That it was going to be more cost effective to talk about doing bonding at a level of ten million dollars? And the lower you go, obviously it's going to cost you more because of some of your fixed cost. By remembering that correctly, that ten million dollars is more of a sweet spot to consider versus going at the lower levels.
You are recalling that at ten, if you stay under ten million in borrowing for a year, you get what is called bank qualified, so you get a little bit better of an interest rate.
Okay, right. Well, that's it's just that's. So on this point in time, we don't need the ten to go to ten million dollars or it's not a benefit to do that.
This is what is needed in order to fund the CIP per council's direction, if you recall. Last year, and then we revisited it a couple of times where we were looking at where we were at with uh outstanding debt capacity and the debt service levy.
Okay.
This is where we landed.
This is all we need in order to take care of the geo bond needs for fiscal year twenty five?
Correct.
Okay, very good. I thank you.
Any other questions on all over here? So. The the million dollars for the Central Plaza. That's not all, I mean.
No, that's just the general obligation bond.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm trying to do the math in my head.
So the local option sales tax makes up a large proportion. Uh, so it's just over nine million dollars. Um, and then we have the grant, so the um so the destination I have a grant also, so there's.
Right.
So there's, I'm I'm in the capital campaign, so there's about four different funding sources for that project.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Nothing else is marked on the agenda for discussion by the staff, so does anyone have questions on anything in the remainder of the agenda? Yes, Mr. Grant.
Quick question, under the consent agenda, engineering one. Talks about the twenty four pavement patching pro- project, so it's some Sixth Avenue and Tower Terrace, so those are the only two. Sections that will be being done and what sections are getting. Done on those two roads?
Sure, so Tower Terrace, it's pretty much from Albernate Road to Tenth. So there's a lot of random cracking that occurred with that, and so we're stitching it. So again. Um, if you remember when Jake comes and gives his PowerPoint presentation on if you spend a little bit of money, you can. Preserve the the pavement longer, so we're being proactive and hey, early so that we can keep that from continuing to deteriorate. And make it more expensive in the future.
Perfect.
And we're trying to get then done also before we add additional traffic from the section that's going to be paid this year.
Makes sense. And then what section of Sixth Avenue was being?
It's a section where the brick is really bad with the crosswalk. I believe it's ninth.
By the. Old fish. What was that called? Hutton's? Hutton's. Rashid's fourth draper.
A long time ago, yeah.
Yeah, so it's the red color banding, that's the crosswalk. Um, so with the amount of traffic, that's not something the public service is able to do, so that's why we're doing it.
And those are the only two areas for that year for patching, okay.
So what, just out of curiosity, why is that needing, I mean, why is it in this condition when it's so new? Like, was that a installation problem or?
I mean, it has been. It it doesn't seem like it's been that long, but it it's been in there for ten years.
Has it really?
Yeah.
Still fairly new though, would you consider the uh Tenth Street was there for a hundred years? Um, so I don't know.
So sometimes, you know, that with our uh materials, it's not, you can put a foot of rock and. And geogrid and like tell the Tower Terrace, for example, that was still wet. If you notice on the south side of Tower Terrace, there's water that comes out of the ground. And goes over the sidewalk. So I mean, Marion soils are not the best, so we can do a lot to try and mitigate that, but we can't. It's it's not like building an airplane. It's not going to ever be perfect.
I'll go over fixing it. Any other, yes, go ahead.
Seth, I went through your uh summer work plan for twenty twenty four. Man, you guys are gonna be busy. I really, I just want you to know, I just, as I read through that, um, I was astounded. And I just really appreciate the comprehensive uh outline of the work that you guys are doing, so thanks.
On that, on that note, um, you know, all the departments are very busy and uh we all have um a lot to be proud of. For, you know, uh, the work that's taking place uh. In our team, um, everyone is doing such great work and um. I was so proud to be able to tell our story again at the state of the city and uh I want to thank everyone for. Their support and all the work, the great work that they're doing that makes it fun to stand up and share. All the successes and to celebrate that, so um thank you all for your hard work. And speaking of celebrating. We had a birthday yesterday that uh we need to recognize, Brooke Proudie. She's she's not happy about this, okay, but you know, we love to celebrate. We're gonna sing happy birthday. Just for me, all right.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Brooke. Happy birthday to you.
With that, the the meeting is adjourned.
Aren't you glad you stayed for the whole thing?
Thank you all.